I'm gonna call the Wednesday, May nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one, meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. And we have a roll call, please. Is somebody from city staff gonna do that?
Okay, sit the sheets up. I can do it real quick.
All right.
Give me one second. And now it disappeared. Uh-oh. All right, sorry about that. Um, Ms. Chester.
Here.
Mr. Cho is excused. Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Roos?
Here.
Ms. Yuchman is also excused. Mr. Warmbrun?
Here.
And Mr. Welch?
Here. We have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
All right. At this time, then, I would ask for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Has everyone received a copy of the minutes? Yes, Charles?
I have a small correction on page four.
All right.
The fourth paragraph says, Mr. Warren asked how feet. You should just insert many, how many feet?
All right.
That's it.
Anyone else have any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. At this time, do we have a motion regarding to the minutes?
It's all moved.
It's been moved that be approved the minutes of February seventeenth meeting. Is there a second to that?
No second.
We have a roll call, please.
Yes. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Warmbrun?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Roos?
Yes.
And Mr. Welch?
Yes, the minutes are approved. Are there any communications?
Um, I actually did receive a few communications that I meant to include in everyone's packet, although they did not make it. So I'll make sure that they're added to the public record. But I received three letters in favor of the requested major variance for uh, two thirteen West Illinois Street. Um, there was not much substance other than their letters of support.
All right. Do we have any continued public hearings?
There are none.
There are none at this time, then we will move to new public hearings. At this time, I would call ZBA two thousand and twenty-one major dash oh-two, a request by Gary Applestadt for a major variance to allow a garage to encroach eleven feet into the, into a required fifteen-foot front yard at two thirteen West Illinois Street in the R-two single-family residential zoning district. We now call this for hearing. Do we have a staff report?
Yeah, and I'll give you guys the option. Um, I know that all five of you have heard this case already once, um, but let me just summarize what happened at the March City Council meeting. And then if you need a refresher, um, I can run through the presentation and we can go from there. Uh, but this is a request from Gary Applestadt for a major variance to allow an, to allow the applicant to rebuild his garage four feet from the west property line in a required front yard at two thirteen West Illinois Street. Uh, the same variance was applied for last December and considered at the ZBA meeting on February eighteenth. Uh, the case went to the City Council on March eighth and was defeated by a vote of four to three. However, the applicant was not given the opportunity to make a statement, and he has asked that it be reconsidered by City Council. Um, in order to do that, it has to go back through the zoning board of appeals before it can be reheard by City Council, so that's why we're bringing you the staff report and presentation today. Um, the recommendation remains the same as the last time you heard it. Uh, staff recommends that uh, the zoning board of appeals make a recommendation of approval to the City Council.
Thank you, Kat. Are you finished?
Yeah, if you guys have specific questions, um, or anything that was not clear from the first time you guys heard it, I can run back through and, um, answer any of those. I would also like to make it known that Gary is here today, and uh, he would like to make a statement on behalf of the applicant again.
All right. Are any questions for staff? Yes, Ashley?
Um, I, you might have already said this, but was there no discussion at the council at all? It was just a vote and then?
No, there was some discussion. The real, um, issue at the City Council meeting was that Gary was never given the opportunity to speak. He was not, no questions from the City Council were directed to him as the applicant. Um, there was some discussion about the garden um, and whether or not it should be removed or should be required to be removed for the garage to be relocated uh, fifteen feet from that property line. Um, but yeah, there was not much back and forth either between staff or, um, the applicant.
So is there a way for you to summarize? Uh, I, maybe it's not okay for me to ask, but I couldn't find, uh, the date of the meeting to look up the notes um, on this particular case. Um, is there a way for you to summarize, like, their concerns or their reasonings for denial? I, I presume that was documented in some capacity?
Yeah, and it, it was. I should have, uh, probably provided more notes, um, from the City Council meeting. But the basis of that conversation was, um, that it does not really meet that minimum deviation requirement because it, if the garden is removed, it could be built fifteen feet from the property line. And that was one change that I made in my staff report today, um, after talking to Lori, the C D director and our city administrator. Um, with that said, it, the case does meet all of the other variance criteria, and in order to keep the garden, we think that the variance request makes sense, um, combined with that and the other zoning criteria. Um, that's why we're in support of the major variance. And additionally, I don't know how well this was discussed the last time we heard it. It's all kind of a blur to me now. Uh, but engineering has weighed in on this case, um, multiple times. And while we did talk about potentially adding a window or mirrors to the sides of the garage, engineering did not think that that was, um, and really required or, or it would not significantly increase the safety on the garage, um, which was something I, I mentioned in the staff report as well. They do not have significant enough concerns to require this garage to be built further from the property line.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Yes, Charles?
That was pretty much my concern, but I saw the, uh, the City Council minutes for that particular meeting, and it said, uh, discussion followed. That was the entire text of, of what, which I was also very interested in, in why it was denied. So you're just saying it was denied because of what? One sentence?
One sentence, um, because the the front yard could be met if the garden were to be removed.
Okay, thank you. So we have an entirely, well, we have two people left on the City Council that voted for that, so we have virtually five new council people.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions for staff? Is that, you want to speak up, Joanne? Go ahead.
Well, what else, as I was, as I was looking at the documents that came this time, something occurred to me. And I, I don't know if we talked about it last time, was that the garage could be moved. I mean, twenty-four by twenty-four is a big garage, and it, but it still has room to move, be moved back towards the house. Move north. And if you moved it four feet to the north, or if you moved to wherever feet, you could get enough, I, I believe, but I'm not an engineer, that you could back out of that garage in the alley that exists and back into the alley. And that's just something I was thinking about.
Can I respond to that just from our conversations?
Go ahead.
Um, I, I totally understand your point, and I think, um, that's a valid reason to bring up again today. That was something that was discussed among engineers as well. Um, I think the the kind of give and take with that situation is that the safety is not dramatically increased when you have a driveway back out onto an alley versus a street, because you still have cars and people traversing the alley, um, especially in that area of town. Um, which, one thing they discussed, like I said, I, I totally understand your, um, your concern, but the, the point that they made was that it's not dramatic, you're not dramatically increasing safety by reorienting that, um, ninety degrees one way or the other.
But it still would be further away from the alley than it would be away from the sidewalk the way it is now. That could be done. And I, I think that every foot is important. Okay, I'll stop.
Any additional questions for staff? Thank you, Kat. Mr. Applestadt, you wish to be heard? Mr. Applestadt?
Yes.
Used to be heard? All right, I have to swear, I have to swear you in. Do you swear? You swear affirm that any testimony you give before this board tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
I do.
Thank you. You may proceed.
In listening to the comments this evening and then in the viewing the comments from the City Council, the characterization that Kat gave is fairly accurate. The City Council was four, four and three, oh, four against and three for, um, the variance request. So there's a difference of one. Um, because of the lack of opportunity to come into that meeting as I just did here, um, I had talked with the City Council members after the first meeting and gave them my point of view on why the garage should be located in its current footprint. Um, it's interesting that one comment was made that it could be moved further north, because right now the twelve-foot width of the alleyway that should be there is encroached by the power poles that run utilities down the alley. So what has been happening is that the alley has veered to the north and is actually running on people's property rather than staying in the twelve-foot right-of-way. Because of that issue, I was planning on moving the south wall of the garage a few feet to the north to get further away from the alley because of the problem with the right-of-way due to the power poles that run utilities down through the alley. However, hearing someone recommend that the entire garage be taking up the green space of the yard is unacceptable to us. The garage has been there since the early nineteen hundreds and has been totally adequate for time and space during that time. The comment was made during the City Council meeting that it should be moved further to the east away from Cedar Street in order to have the fifteen-foot clearance. However, that would shade the entire backyard and their garden would no longer exist. Uh, my wife and I purchased a property in two thousand and fourteen. We appreciated the architecture of it. We appreciated the history of it, and that's what we want to preserve. The current garage is, uh, getting more dilapidated, and it does need to be attended to. However, the location of the garage seems perfectly reasonable for the hundred years that it's been there, and the new requirement of the, uh, corner setbacks is a problem of a new, um, ordinance passed in the last twenty years. The house had been there for a hundred and ten years. So it's our motion to allow the garage to maintain, we're going to maintain the, uh, architecture of it. We like to maintain the footprint of it, although a little bit further north away from the alley. We want to maintain the green spaces, green space of the yard and the trees that are there, as well as give the opportunity to have a garden for the neighborhood. And those all seem to be perfectly valid points, I believe. And I'm, I'm done with my comments.
Thank you. Are there questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Is there any, uh, further response from staff in light of what was said by the applicant? Hearing, hearing none, then I believe we're ready to call for the question. Do we have any motion?
I'll move that the zoning board of appeals recommend approval of the proposed major variance in case ZBA two thousand and twenty-one dash major oh-two. Is that the correct one? Um, to the Urbana City Council as presented in the staff report.
Is there a second to that motion? Like that? It's now been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion? I believe we're ready for a vote then. And this must pass by the necessary outcome to be forwarded on to the City Council since it's a major variance. Go ahead, Kat.
All right. Uh, Ms. Chester?
No.
Uh, Mr. Roos?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Warmbrun? Oops, sorry, you're muted.
Yes.
And Mr. Welch?
Yes. That, uh, motion carries by the necessary, uh, majority to be forwarded on to the City Council at their meeting of?
June fourteenth.
June fourteenth. Thank you, Mr. Applestadt.
Thank you.
At this time, I would call for hearing ZBA two thousand and twenty-one dash major dash oh-four, a request by New Lincoln Square LLC, represented by James Webster, for a major variance to allow two electronic message boards to change message frequency up to once per minute on an existing shopping center sign at two oh-one East Green Street in the B-four Central Bris, Central Business Zoning District. We have a staff report.
Yes, you do. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Can everyone hear? Yes, go ahead.
I am attempting to share my screen. Let's see if we can do that again. Okay, bear with me, please. Okay, um, while this is coming back up, um, Jim Webster is here to speak on behalf of his application, um, or to answer any questions you might have.
Success.
Yes, uh, so, uh, this is a request for a major variance to increase the message change frequency for electronic boards at two oh-one East Green Street to one message, from one message per three minutes to one message per minute. The applicant's, the sign and the electronic message boards at the location, as well as the Lincoln Square Shopping Center that it advertises. The sign itself is located in City Lot ten X, is owned by the city of Urbana, and managed by the applicant via a series of parking agreements. The city has given the applicant permission to apply for the variance. For this major variance request to be approved, the ZBA must recommend approval by a two-thirds majority to forward it to City Council for final review and approval. Staff recommend the zoning board of appeals approve the request with one condition. Uh, Lincoln Square was built in nineteen sixty-four. There are two shopping center signs, one at the southeast corner of the shopping center complex, which is shown with the little white triangle on the exhibit A. And there's also another sign, uh, to the north at East Green Street and South Vine. When the shopping center was built, the subject sign was constructed as a three-sided freestanding sign with annual letter boards. Around nineteen ninety-five, letter boards on the southeast and northeast signs were converted to electronic message boards. These boards stopped working years ago, and the applicant would like to replace them with new eboards inside the existing frames. In order to maximize the usefulness of the sign, the applicant has stated that the number of signs is dependent upon the length of time each message may be displayed. To maximize the eboard's effectiveness, they'd like to increase the message change frequency to one message per minute. City Lot ten X is bounded on the east by, uh, South Vine Street, and the city building on the south by Illinois Street and Moore Parking Lot and Commercial on the west by more parking lots, and on the north by more parking lots and Lee Square Mall to the northwest. The site and properties to the north and west and south are zoned B-four Central Business District. To the east is a mix of high-density residential and Central Business District, and includes the city building and parking lots. The future land use for the site and to the south and west and north is Central Business, and to the east is institutional, and to the southeast is residential. The applicant would like to increase the message change frequency from a maximum of one message per three minutes to a maximum of one message per minute. All other regulations would remain, including illumination standards and the prohibition on animation. The purpose of the frequency cap is to reduce the distraction to password spot. The typical light, traffic light cycle at this intersection at which drivers pass is approximately forty seconds plus ten seconds of the left turn arrow is triggered by a left-turning vehicle. Uh, the speed limit here is thirty miles an hour. Traffic is usually probably running between twenty and twenty-five miles due to the intersection if the light is green. At this rate, somebody is most likely, a driver is likely to see one message as they are driving by at the current three-minute rate. It is possible, if they are approaching the sign, at the time that it is transitioning from one message, the next thing they see two messages. If the rate was increased to one message per minute, a driver is more likely to drive by during a transmission, as there are three times as many transmissions, transitions occurring as before. But they are still not likely to see three messages unless they get stopped at the traffic light or multiple traffic light cycles. Therefore, in staff's opinion, one message per minute should not distract a driver as long as all other eboard regulations are followed. So, uh, here is a picture of the current sign. The subject sign is on the left. The sign on the right is the other shopping center sign further north. This is a proposed, um, mock-up of the electronic message board replacement. It would be the same size as the current boards, as it would simply be replacing the electronic insert inside the existing frames. Uh, here are some photos taken approximately one block away from the sign, and you can see inside the yellow bounding rectangle how small the sign is to an approaching driver. You, one needs to be about half a block away before you can actually read the sign. This also limits the potential distraction caused by increasing message change frequency. And, uh, here's a picture, an aerial of the intersection. Let me see if I can, uh, do some annotation here. The sign is located here. And it's approximately legible at this point and at this point. Um, timing, myself driving through the intersection, it takes approximately uh, fifteen seconds to drive the one-half block distance going approximately, uh, twenty-five miles an hour as if one is going through a green light. So there isn't much time to be distracted by this sign, um, at the current rate. And we will clear those and stop. And let's clear those again. Okay, um, we did res, additional information from city civil engineer Shannon Baranek, who shared with us that the National Cooperative Highway Research Program recommends no more than four messages per minute for electronic displays, as that is when the, uh, possibility for distraction reaches a high enough level to worry about the proposed variances for one message per minute. So this is well below that standard. Um, moving into the variance criteria, there are no special circumstances related to the sign or the property in which it is located that are not generally applicable to other electronic message boards in the B-four Central Business District. Um, I will mention that, uh, this song predates electronic message board, uh, regulations. regulations. We do not currently permit electronic message boards in the B four Central Business District. They are allowed in the B three General Business District. Uh, this sign, when it was first proposed probably in nineteen ninety-five, met the definition of a community event sign uh as was on city property and um controlled by the city and or then likely advertised community events as well as the mall. Um, and that is how staff are treating it now. Moving on to the second variance criteria, the result, the request is not the result of any situation created by the applicant. They simply to replace two malfunctioning eboards and to program them to change message at a rate of one per minute rather than one per three minutes. This would positively affect economic development at Lincoln Square according to the applicant. The variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood as it is a mix of commercial, institutional, and residential uses. The shopping center has been an integral part of the neighborhood for fifty years. And the signs and electronic boards have been there for over twenty-five years. The variance will cause a nuisance to the adjacent property as there is no record of a nuisance created by the original eboards. And we staff presume that the replaced eboards would not cause a nuisance to the adjacent property provided they follow all other regulations. The applicant wants to maximize the effectiveness of the sign. And the proposed increase in message frequency is a smaller deviation from the zoning ordinance than other potential options such as increasing the eboard's size or brightness or allowing animations. These would likely be more distracting to passing drivers. And finally, practical difficulty in carrying out the zoning ordinance is that the small size of the eboards and the short approach time to the eboards results in a very high likelihood the potential shoppers and visitors would see only one message. And increasing the rate of message change frequency to one minute would increase the number of messages likely to be viewed from one to two messages, which would still not be a distraction to drivers. The staff findings are summarized in the staff report. And uh, the zoning board of appeals has the options in this case to for the case to city council with a recommendation to prove the variance as requested to forward the case with a recommendation to approve the variance with certain terms and conditions or deny the variance request, and if so, articulate findings supporting the denial. Uh, in this case, staff recommends that ZBA forward case ZBA twenty twenty one MAJ oh four to city council with a recommendation to approve with the following condition. The existing signs on the exterior of Lincoln Square, including the Illinois and Green Street shop signs, be in compliance prior to installation of their replacement electronic message boards. And that is the end of the staff report.
Thank you, Marcus. Are there any questions? I have one. Um. Are there signs with this same frequency elsewhere in the city?
Uh, are there signs with a message frequency of one message per minute?
Yes.
There are not. Uh, there is an electronic sign down at the Pines Shopping Center uh that was granted a variance to change, I believe, once every ten seconds. Um, that was in two thousand nine. Um, and that was through some discussion about because that shopping center would have been permitted multiple shopping center signs, multiple electronic messages rather than doing multiple signs. They wanted to consolidate their message frequency onto a single electronic message board, and they were granted that major variance.
Yes, Adam.
Do you happen to know the message frequency for these electronic sign we approved at the Methodist Church that's right adjacent to the shopping center?
Um, having managed that case, that sign is supposed to be following all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance, so it would limit it to one message per three minutes.
Okay.
Are there other questions? I have one additional question. The uh recommendation about compliance are are the so- are other signs at Lincoln Square not in compliance? I didn't understand.
Um, staff are staff are gonna be making sure that uh things like signs for tenants that no longer be at the mall to work with Mr. Webster to get those signs removed. Um, or if there are missing sign bases, there's uh nothing significantly out of compliance.
Okay.
Staff feel though that for special dispensation be given that all other requirements are currently being met.
Okay, that, yeah, that, okay, then that cleared that up, then it's more cosmetic than compliance like what we usually talk about.
Right.
Okay. Are there any additional questions for s- staff? All right, thank you. Mr. Webster? You wish to be heard, sir? You have to unmute yourself, Miss. Mr. Webster, do you wish to be heard?
Yes, please.
All right, I have to swear you in. Do you swear affirm that any testimony you give before this board tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, um, thanks for um taking the time to hear this case. Um. I've been involved with Lincoln Square for about twenty years and you know, it's a, it's, it's been uh poor, it's challenging, it's a challenging retail market with, with co- e-commerce and all the other competition, shopping patterns change, so we had to kind of reinvent ourselves, but one of the, one of the things that we're trying to do is to have more transparency to tenants who are often kind of, people don't know they exist. We have about forty tenants. And a lot of times people, when they come in the mall, they'll say, you know, we didn't realize we had to hit this was here or that was here. So it's trying to give more attention to those tenants. Um, and um, also, it's, we're going to have more messages concerning events, some community messages and um just, just make people where more aware of what's going on. Um, so we think the technology has uh improved to the point where these message centers are are very, you know, so much improved to from what they were. We did the other message center. And um, and it, it would be a good time, I think would improve the mall. Uh, prove the business with businesses within the mall. And I think it could also um help residents in the community be more aware of what's going on at Lincoln Square. That's really, I don't have the sign company is, is American Dow. Uh, the manufacturer is Watch, Watch Fire in Danville. They produce signs, manufacture signs all over the world. Excuse me. And uh, I think they have a good product. Um, we'll, we'll have somebody constantly upgrade, upgrade, updating and, and, and uh giving current messages so it doesn't, it's not stale. Probably have some standard things in about time and temperature and just sort of, you know, few of those kind of things, but most part, it's, it's marketing for the tenants.
Thank you, Mr. Webster. Uh, are there questions for the applicant? Hearing none, I thank you, Mr. Webster. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone um who wishes to be heard against the application? All right. Hearing um are finding that there are no other speakers to be heard, ready to call for the question. Is there a motion?
Can Marcus put his amendment back up on the screen?
Yes, please.
The, can you put the condition up, I guess, is what I need?
I think it's underneath.
Underneath?
Underneath the, right there, yeah. That's the, that's the condition.
Okay, uh. I moved it to ZBA forward case as ZBA twenty twenty one dash major dash oh four uh to the city council with a recommendation for approval with the following condition. Uh, that the existing signs on the exterior of Lincoln Square, including the Illinois and Green Street shopping signs be in compliance prior to the installation of the replacement electr- electronic message board.
It's been so moved. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Now I've been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, I believe we're ready to call this uh this case to vote.
Okay, um.
Oh, she's, she's on. Cat, go ahead.
I was trying to find the sheet again. Uh, Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Roos?
Yes.
Mr. Warmbrenn?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes, that um passes with the necessary majority to uh be forwarded on to the city council for their consideration at meeting of
That should be the city council meeting on the fourteenth of June as well.
June fourteen. Thank you, Mr. Webster. Good luck.
Thank you.
Is there any old business? All right, is there any new business?
No.
We have no audience. Is there a staff report?
None.
None. Study session?
Nope.
And I believe we are, are ready to be adjourned, and I will so move. Thank you all.
Adjourned at seven forty-four PM. Thank you, guys.